Evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular full Board of Alderman meeting for December 14th. Order please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Keep the flag. The United States of America.
Can we get a roll call?
Alderman King. Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar. Yeah. Alderman Cessetti.
Here.
Alderman Giannetti.
Here.
Alderman Knapp.
Here.
Alderman Spigorolo. Alderman Yaman. Alderman Rivers. Alderman Mammon.
Here.
Alderman Short.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro. Twelve to absent.
I declare a quorum. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to add two items to the agenda. One is under Old Business, the issue of 22 Silver Hill Road. And the second one is under Executive Session, potential lease of Opera House.
Josh, I'm sorry. Trish, did you get Frank De Libro because he? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Josh, do you need a motion to add those to the agenda?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to add the two previously stated items to the agenda for tonight.
Deck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. So we'll pick those up later in the meeting. We'll also pick up the minutes from the previous meeting next month. So Public Session, for those of you that are visiting for the first time, just a quick reminder. Actually, before we get to Public Session, I want to thank everyone for voting for me. Except for Chicago, I'm sure secretly abstained. But no, thank you all for your confidence in me and your support, and it's been a fun, fun time. I love doing meetings from my basement, so keep it up. And thanks again. And as a reminder, the Board of Aldermen Subcommittee appointments and summits will be available shortly. I'll be sending those out. But for those Aldermen, especially the new ones, Bob and Steve, you know, if you have special skills that, you know, that you feel would be good on certain committees, please let me know, and I'll try to appropriately assign you. And that's it. All right, so move on to Public Session. Just quickly, reminder of the rules, please identify yourself for the public record, name and address. Number two, please remember that this is not a Q and A. We'll do our best to address things. But we can't really go engaging back and forth, you know, on some of these topics on the spot. And three, please limit any responses in the public session to three minutes or less. So with that being said, is anybody from the public who wish to speak to the Alderman tonight? All right, we have a hand up. Rick Dunn?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. President of the Board, Members of the Board of Aldermen, my name is Rick Dunn. I live at 241 Silver Hill Road in the city of Derby. I'm here tonight in my capacity as a private citizen, and I've been asked by a number of our neighbors in both Derby and Ansonia to address the board tonight and encourage you to affirm your previous actions with regard to the public safety improvements on Silver Hill Road in front of, I believe it's number 22 is the address. Really just, just wanted to make certain, I was disappointed that the Planning and Zoning Commission did not approve the 824 referral. Wanted to make certain that everyone understood that that's an advisory referral and that you're not bound by that action. On behalf of the neighbors, though, we're really scared about driving on this street. It's a very dangerous situation. You have a steep descending curve in that area. Many of us have been involved in accidents on that bend and on other bends below it. Mirrors clipped off. I mean, literally, we're inches away from head-on collisions on some days. So the ability to create a loading zone of some sort off the road within the public right-of-way but off the lane of travel so that vehicles like Amazon delivery trucks, I swear they grow on the hill, but you come down around that blind corner and it's sitting right in the road because there's nowhere to go. And it's a very, very dangerous situation. I think, I think it's, you know, this is the best move in the interest of public safety and the interest of the traveling public. But I do, I just did want to raise one, one thing has happened. There's a granite block that's been placed along the curb line of the road. It's very, very dangerous. You've created a more dangerous situation because there is no area of refuge. If a vehicle goes off the road, it's going to hit this multi-ton block of granite, which, which I would think would be a bad situation for the city in terms of liability. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board, and I encourage you to take the action to approve the safety improvements on Silver Hill. Thank you.
Thank you for visiting. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the Board of Aldermen tonight?
Aye.
Yes, Chris.
My name is Christopher Mulcarkey, and I ask that you vote in favor of granting me once again the permanent for a parking spot despite the negative finding of an 824 from P and Z. I have once again asked the neighborhood their feelings on this, and there's an overwhelming support for this endeavor. There's also a great deal of disgust and dismay that P and Z is so dysfunctional as not to approve this. They also concur that the turn in the road there is the most dangerous spot in the entire road, and a parking spot will help make this area safer. I understand there are rumors I lied to get people to sign during the first petition, so I asked them all with a question in the petition, and they all said no. No matter how, who says this, no matter how many times that's said, that's clearly not true whatsoever. They know I live alone with no handicap person. I have filed the petition with the town clerk for you all with my first and only drawing of scope of work. Look and you will see that I mark where the neighbor's land is. I have never tried to lead anyone to believe this was only in front of my property. This current petition has 113 signatures from the immediate neighborhood. All the surrounding streets were the people who drive Silver Hill live. I did not meet, again, a lot of people due to this holiday season of shopping dinners and vacations. I'm sure their neighbors will talk with them regarding this issue. As well, there are many concerned citizens that are not signed on this petition such as commuters, shoppers, those seeking to do business, or the great amount of relatives these people have who must make that dangerous turn to see their loved ones. I'm sure this will all come up in their holiday conversations as well. We all agree this turn is the most dangerous part here, and a parking space will help. While widening the entire curve will be a real answer to this problem. This easement is at least a step in the right direction to making this a safer road. You have seen the good in this and voted unanimously for it before, and I'm asking that you do the same again.
Thank you for visiting. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the Board of Aldermen tonight in Public Session?
Hi, I'd like to speak about the issue on Kimberly Lane. Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address for the public record, please.
My name is Stella Jacaruso at 305 Kimberly Lane. And I was just, thank you that we were able to get this on the agenda. My neighbors and I are grateful for that. I was just following up on the P and Z meeting last month. P and Z voted unanimously to accept the road. Corporation Council, Mr. Marini, he had sent them a letter and advised to accept it, so I know it's on the agenda for tonight. I just wanted to see if any of the Aldermen had any questions for me, if they've been able to look over the information. I believe we, you guys have all of the information that was sent to P and Z as well. So I believe everything is there, and you know, we're hopeful for a vote to accept the road. And like I said, I just wanted to see if any of the Aldermen had any questions, if they were able to see it, you know, before it's taken up.
Thank you. I know that this, that issue is on the agenda under Old Business, as is the previous Silver Hill. Both of those are now on the agenda to be discussed later in the meeting. But if any, does anyone have any questions at this time? All right, thank you also for visiting. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight in front of the Aldermen? Looking around for hands. Second call, anyone who wishes to speak in Public Session? And one's going twice, third and final call for Public Session. Seeing none, we'll close the Public Session and move on to Public Official Session. Mayor Cassetti.
President Shored, members of the Board of Aldermen in residence in the great city of Ansonia. First, let us stand for a moment of silence for Ralph Villers, whose leadership and friendship should be an example for all of us in the city of Ansonia. He will be greatly missed. Thank you. It is wonderful to be with you here tonight, here at the last Board of Aldermen meeting for 2021. Let me begin by extending my congratulations to all our new Aldermen. I look forward to working with you for the next two years. Together, we will continue to lead the fight to recharge our community. And if we're lucky, you'll even get to see the inside of the Board of Aldermen chambers before your term extends. Good luck and welcome aboard. Now, on the subject of COVID, I want to once again stress how important it is for our residents, young and old, to be fully vaccinated, to make things as easy as possible. We will be continuing our series of vaccination clinics with our tremendous partner, Griffin Health. Our next clinic date will be this Thursday night and Saturday morning at Mead School. We will have first shots, we will have second shots, and boosters, and even pediatric doses for kids five and above. How's that for a comprehensive menu? Let's pull together and finally get COVID behind us. Otherwise, I can't be held responsible for giving Sheila permission to lease out the Board of Aldermen chambers as an IHOP. And I hope, and I hope that gets you hungry for more economic development news. Because I can tell you tonight that the apartments at the ATP and Palmer Building are preparing to go online early next year. In fact, the developers have informed me that 17 units have been spoken for as commercial space gets prepped on the lower floors. Plus, you have likely noticed that our new Riverwalk segment is nearing completion and looks fabulous. And I can't forget, with your approval later tonight, we will give a green light to proceed with the construction of the senior center at 65 Main Street, putting us on track for completion in late spring 2022. That's a lot of progress to look forward to, and I haven't even mentioned our ongoing splash pad project or our State Street overhaul. I do, however, need to mention next week's special unveiling ceremony with Griffin Health at the Ansonia Armory on the morning of Wednesday, December 22nd, 2021, as they give us the keys to the Armory. I don't have to tell you how touched and grateful I am by Griffin Health's incredible, incredible generous donation. The rehabilitation of the Armory will mean so much for our community, especially for our youth. And believe it or not, I have no idea what the finished space looks like. I haven't been in there. So stay tuned to social media for our first official look at the new Ansonia Armory next week as we end the year on a great high note. Now, I want to address an area of grave concern to me, and I'm sure all of you. Like many Connecticut cities, we have experienced an uptick in criminal activity within the last year. And just last week, we experienced another incident. This time, shots fired around Ford Street, a heavily residential area. Fortunately, no one was injured, but I am not about to sit around and wait for the worst to happen. I fully understand that the Police Accountability Act, which is despicable in my, my say, has made our officer's job more difficult and damaged recruitment efforts across the board in this state. And I understand that criminals in Connecticut are getting the impression that they have free run of the streets based on the continued policies of this lagging state legislature. So it's time to adopt our new circumstances. The Connecticut Accountability Act may have tied our hands, but I can't close our eyes. That's why I have tasked my staff, including Chief Williams and Corporation Council Marini, to develop a plan or plans for the street surveillance program that will keep an electric eye on areas most vulnerable to crime. Through the use of modern technology, we will explore the use of digital recording devices and license plate tracking technology to significantly increase the odds of catching criminals in the act. Ansonia must never, never become a safe spot for those who commit crime. And with the, with this board support, our city will become the last place a criminal will want to visit. You'll be hearing more on this project in the months to come. Now let me end by wishing you all a very happy holiday season. Remember that you can still donate to our toy drive, collecting presents for Ansonia Girls and Boys in City Hall. A big thanks to Alderwoman Bobby Tar for spearheading this effort. Now have a wonderful holiday, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. God bless you all, and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on, the Public Official Session will move to Corporation Council, John Marini.
Thanks, Mr. President, and congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all of the new Aldermen. As the mayor just stated, we have an event coming up with Griffin. Very happy to see the unveiling, to see the rehabilitation of the historic Ansonia Armory. We'd like to have, of course, the Alderman present for the event, but of course, per Griffin, there's, there's an importance to make sure that any gathering is with vaccinated individuals only. And obviously, you know, we're backing that up to stay on the safe side. We're urging that if there are any city officials who'd like to be in attendance, that you get your vaccinations ASAP, that you're fully vaccinated by the time of the event on the 22nd. And of course, you have plenty of opportunities to do that at Mead School Thursday or Saturday morning, whether it's your second shot, your booster, you're going to have an opportunity to do that. But very, very exciting to see this unveiling. Additionally, tonight on Executive Session, you've added the Opera House. I'm happy to report the conversations seem to be going in a very positive direction. For the new Aldermen, this is an opportunity to engage in a long-term lease in favor of the city, of the portions of 100 Main Street that constitute the classic historic Ansonia Opera House that has, of course, been dormant for decades and decades. The idea here is that the city may be able to bring some funding through grants for restoration of the Opera House. And in return, we're looking to have essentially a leasehold on the property to be able to to reinvigorate the downtown area. So we'll talk more about that in Executive Session. Want to let the board know that another round of contract negotiations is starting with our Nature Center Rangers, and you'll be hearing more about that in the months to come. But our formal negotiating, first negotiating session will be in the first week of January. And finally, the mayor touched on a plan for video surveillance to help support our police officers and to help detect crime in a new innovative way. City is looking at obtaining some quotes and going to some, some firms for some consulting to figure out what a first phase of this project would look like, and of course, getting corresponding costs and options. So you could be sure that this is going to be a continued conversation into early next year. That's it for now. We have a bit to discuss on the agenda in an executive session, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for Attorney Marini from the Aldermen? All right, you get off easy. Move on to Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to you and to the board. Few, a few items. 153 Main Street, where the new apartments are going in, the first phase, 25 new windows were put in. A total of 90 will be placed, and which will transform the building. You'll see a big, a big difference with that. And then you're going to also see some exterior work, canopies and clearing for the entranceway of 153 Main. So you're going to see some visible changes. Most of the, most of the work has been done inside and obviously not visible. So hopefully you'll, you'll get a better sense of how that building's going to look with the apartments in there. And that they're working on a transformer with UI and hopefully power for the, for the new apartments on Monday. Met with Stell Ray Larry Safran, who is putting an addition on to his building, 7,000 square foot manufacturing addition, which will increase his capacity and also probably increase the employee number. So that's exciting, you know, and he's also working on another addition to to be built on his property for retail for my eye doctor and another space for retail. Working on three applications. I'm, I'm going to start to get more and more vague on these applications because they are competitive. And I'm just, just getting a little paranoid about it. We have two federal applications in and one state application, but most of the applications that we make, I make on behalf of the city is for, as you know, SHW and Ansonia Copper and Brass. And SHW asbestos piping has been wrapped in preparation for for demolition, which will occur sometime next month, I am being told. So I mentioned two federal grants and one state grant, and I believe that's it. Mayor talked about the Riverwalk. Hopefully in the springtime, everybody can enjoy the amenities. The, the rest areas and the canopies are being installed, and that should look beautiful. It's a really nice segment. And our study to continue the, the Riverwalk is near completion. So I'll have, we'll have a public meeting on that so we can lay out the maps and, and show everybody where the next segment's going. I think that's it for now. I have other items, but they're on the agenda. Yep, which I'll talk about later.
Great. Any questions up to this point for Economic Development from the Aldermen?
Yes.
Yes.
When can I get a tour of that, the building there where the apartments are going?
Oh, whatever you'd like. Let me know, and we'll, and we'll get you through.
Okay, and the most important thing is, are we going to have an IHOP zone?
Get reference, second, second mention of that. Yes, that's the hope for the bottom floor of one of those buildings.
I know you can.
Not supposed to talk about it, but you guys can bring it up.
I know you can get it done.
Yeah, you can have some pancakes when you're on the tour.
If not, you know, I'll bring my friend with you.
Okay.
With me.
Okay. Good.
Anybody take a guess where, where Rivers went on his birthday?
By half.
Of course. No stock in the place. What do you mean?
Josh, what a way to short stack it on him. Could always butter him up, I guess, right?
Oh.
Come on. Back on mute, I go.
Mute yourself.
It'll be a forced mute in a second. Any other questions for Economic Development from the Aldermen? Like she said, there's a few items that we'll be calling on you for later in the agenda. All right.
Yeah, I don't want there to be a sticky situation.
Oh, God. We're definitely moving on now to Chief Wayne Williams, Ansonia Police Department. You are on mute.
There we go. All right, good evening again. To pile on, congratulations, President, on your reelection and to all the, the Aldermen on the new year. Just an update, staff-wise, we're currently down six officers in our agency. We opened a new testing process this week, so we are currently accepting applications for certified and non-certified officer candidates. So if anybody has anyone, you can give them, they can go to the city's website. They can go to policeapp.com. They can call my office. We'll get them an application. We'll get them, we'll get them hooked up. So if you can, if you can pass the word, that would be great. We are looking for candidates, especially city residents. The mayor touched on last week, we were dealing with incidents of firearms being discharged in the North End. Luckily, as he said, nobody was injured. We are still investigating both of the incidents. At this time, we have nothing indicate that those actually were connected to each other. We have doubled our patrols in the North End since the first incident on Thursday on Ford Street. And actually, it was one of our officers that called in the second incident on Friday night on the one-way section of Fifth Street. The doubled-up patrols are continuing as well as adding some additional patrols up there from our other sector cars. Also, you may have seen on the news over the last two days, the incidents at the Ansonia High School yesterday involving an online social media threat. Once reported, we were quickly able to get officers at the school, and we assisted with both dismissing the school early and investigating the complaint. Yesterday afternoon, we made one arrest of a juvenile at the school regarding that online threat. As a follow-up to that today, last night and today, we have made two additional arrests of juveniles from the Ansonia High School for social media posts and/or messages that have caused alarm at the school. We worked closely with the school and the Superincidence Office to investigate these cases. Just want to make it clear that the police department and the school system take any social media posts or messages that threaten school violence to be serious, and we have taken a zero-tolerance approach to these situations. I urge parents to have discussions with their children about the seriousness of these incidents so they understand the ramifications of their actions. Even joking around, it's not funny, especially in this day and age, especially today on the 90-year anniversary of Sandy Hook. At the last meeting, the Alderman brought up a light at the corner of Main and Kingston that hadn't been working. We worked with our vendor, and that light has now been repaired. There are some additional repairs that are probably going to be needed there, but for now, it's up and running. We are still working with the state DOT to put a new illuminated stop sign at the intersection of Pulaski and Prindle Avenue. We hope to have that installed shortly. Last month, next, lastly, next month, I'm going to be putting up a contract in front of this board with Axon for the in-car camera systems, as I've mentioned in previous meetings. That is part of the Police Accountability Bill that we have to install cameras inside all of our cars. So we've been negotiating with Axon, but unfortunately, because of the shipping problems, they were having problems getting some of the chips for these camera systems. So I have the final, I had the final presentation from them today, and we have a contract that we'll be bringing forward in the next meeting next month. Once installed, that'll cover all our obligations regarding body cameras and in-car cameras under the Police Accountability Bill. Just for your awareness, this 1217, we'll be having our last stuff a Jeep food drive for the Christmas holiday. And then on 1218, we'll be having our shop with a cop yearly event that we hold down at Target, and I believe that there has been some negotiation with the mayor that if he wears his very bright Christmas outfit, that a local business is going to contribute to her shop with a cop program. So with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for the chief from the Aldermen?
Hey, chief, it's Tony. I have a, just I want to commend you and Superintendent, you know, Joe DeBaco for your, for your swift action, you know, what happened at the school. As you said, it's not funny. It's not a joke, and it needs to be handled with the, you know, the strictest and firmest hand that we have. So I commend, you know, both of you for your actions. So I commend, you know, both of you for your actions on that. Secondly, thank you again for addressing, you know, the, some of the complaints on Fourth Street. For, you know, modifying some of the surveillance that you guys have been doing and some of the monitoring on the, you know, the runway over there. And then lastly, shop with a cop, is there any details on that online or anything?
So I, it's not online, but I can send them over to you. We, we do a program once a year where we work with Target. And what it is, is our school resource officer, Mike Berry, is actually the one who heads this up. And he works with all the schools to identify some families that may be in need this Christmas holiday. And between officer donations, Target donations, and one or two of the businesses that have donated. We raise money to, to take those families shopping at Target. And they actually have, they do a really nice job down there. The, the, the business wraps the presents at the end for us. They provide hot chocolate, et cetera. So it's a, it's a really nice social event that we, we do every year with the, with the, with the school system.
Okay. I, I don't know if you could either post it on the Ansonia PD website or the, the Facebook page or the city could even publish something. Cause that, again, sounds like something I'd like to partake in. So if you could send me some info, that'd be great.
Abs- absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief from the Alderman?
Yes, how you doing, Chief? Did you get any reports? I think it was Sunday night over here, there were shots fired. It sounded like it was between Franklin and Wakely. Between Scotland and, and Clarkson, I think it was. I was home and I heard the shots myself and I, I thought that you. I thought that. People had already called you. They called me to tell me about it, but I was actually home and I heard it myself, so.
Yep. So I'm, I'm not aware of any of those. I'll check with Lieutenant Lynch and I'll check our operations plan that we had that night. I don't, I'm not aware of any shots being fired up there. I am aware, as I'm sure you living up there are aware. That there are several vehicles up in that area, especially coming out of Nolan Field, going up Wakely Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
That happened, the muffler systems that are mimicking machine gun fire and shot fires. So we have been trying to address that. It had calmed down for a little while. But I'm not aware of any calls for service up there that reported shots being fired. And usually that's a pretty condensed neighborhood. So we'll, if that happens, we get, we get the phone calls pretty quick.
Okay.
And then what normally happens is we respond up there with a bunch of officers. And then some of the neighbors will come outside and say, no, it's that. And they'll reference certain vehicles that, that may have been up in that area with their, with their mufflers.
Okay. All right. Well, I, um, well. I'm pretty sure that I heard shots.
If, all I would ask is that when those come in, if you could call us, if you.
Yeah, sure.
Call us. I mean, I know they call you because you're their alderman, but it, I, I, I always try to encourage people to call the police when they hear somebody firing off. A firearm.
Okay. I will do that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Any other questions for the chief tonight from the Alderman? Charlie?
Yes, sir. Chief, I have, I have four questions for you regarding Ford Street. So what is the attraction to that place? It seems like there's been an ongoing criminal activity there before I was born. And I'm sixty years old, so I don't, I don't, what is with this place, you know, that attracts what's going on there?
Well, I, I'm assuming you're, I thought you said Ford, but I'm assuming you're saying Fourth Street.
Fourth.
Yeah, um, I wish I had the answer for you. It is a very condensed neighborhood. We know we have a lot of people that hang out in the park. We have people that will hang around at that store. We addressed trying to push cars away from that intersection. And to get the park cleaned up, we've worked with the Alderman over the summer to try and get that cleaned up. And there are. I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna give up too much of what we're working on up there, but there are occasionally. There are occasionally groups that will move into that area or established residences in that area. And I think you've seen in some of our press releases recently, some execution of a search warrant that took place right at that intersection. Where the shots were fired on Thursday night. So we, we are trying to address those incidents on a case by case basis. But we've been working, as the mayor mentioned, and Attorney Marini, we worked with them over the week to see if there's a little bit more we can do. With setting up. Cameras, we increase our presence up there, but even with our increased presence up there on Friday, Friday evening. You saw that there was a shots fired call one street away from where the officer actually was located.
Well, it seems like they just, you know, for, for, cause I don't know what's claimed to know what's going on there. I just know that it seems like there's arrests and shootings in that area. And, you know, they, these.
I got a water bottle, are you looking for that?
What's that?
Nah, that's somebody's unmuted.
Yeah, that was a tone, uh, John.
Okay. So I mean, you know, it just seems like they, they keep coming back. There's no, they replenish the ranks. You go up there and try to get them out of there and then they fill in the void again. Is that accurate? Or is it same, or is it the same people?
Well, I will tell you that both of those are probably the same. We have locked individuals up. And that's just not on the North End. We had just issue in other areas of town where we lock individuals up. The problem calms down for a little while. Some other people tried to come into the area. A lot of it is usually drug related. And then when people get out of prison, they come up there, wanna take back their territory and it's an ongoing battle that we have with them.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, I, I, I care about the other wards, but I mean, at this point, it seems to be so bad. On Fourth Street there that I, you know, I need to, I'm, I'm an Alderman for that area. And I need to focus my attention to try to see if we can work something out together. The other thing. I, I gotta, I got two more, I got three more questions. I'd really like to have answered that. I'm sorry if I take up some time. So is it an option for Mr., maybe Mr. Marine could put some in, input on this also? Is it possible to start working on a report? Where the police department, the mayor's office, the Alderman, you know, any other law enforcement that can be involved. Can start working on a report of options for things for us to do. You know, to, to move ahead with this, cause we can't just stay where we are now stationary. I mean, I mean, we're literally half a mile from the mayor's office and we're having shots, you know. And, and the police station, the brand new police station's not even probably a quarter of a mile. And it's right, you know, right in, in our wheelhouse. You know, I, I'd like to see some type of a, a report done. So that we can feel all of us like we have a, a plan to move forward, you know, with the cameras. And, and anything else that we can provide assets up there. Um, I, I think it might be more helpful to get a report because then, you know, we can learn by our mistakes. And continue to improve, improve on the report and possibly use some similar methods in other areas of the town. So that's, that's a question.
So I, I think you mentioned Alderman's store report. And what we plan to do is help supplement the ongoing work of the police. And, and the police certainly are doing their investigatory work. That information is necessarily confidential. But what, you know, what can be done to make their job easier in light of the restrictions that they face with the new Accountability Act? And just a more difficult time overall i- in law enforcement these days. And we came to the conclusion that surveillance could be a worthwhile investment for the city of Ansonia. It certainly is for larger cities, Waterbury, Bridgeport, you know, they, they have efforts to, to. To, to install networks or surveillance on public streets that helps with crime detection. It helps with crime deterrence. And when you think about Ansonia, we're a small city, we're a much smaller area compared to a Bridgeport or Waterbury. So you know that an effort is going to have a, a much higher return on investment here in Ansonia than it is in a place like Bridgeport or Waterbury. So of course, the first step is, you're exactly right, a report. It's a study. It's trying to figure out, you know, where our resources are best, are, are best put. You know, if, if we're going to fund this effort, you know, what's a way to do it with maximum results? And so we're, that's exactly what we're doing. We're, we're looking at the security surveillance experts, looking at those firms. To help us craft an analysis, get some options, you know, what would make sense as a first phase for this effort. And it's not just looking at things like cameras. It's also looking at things like plate readers. Ways to be able to be monitoring these public areas and extracting information from public areas. That will again help detect, detect crime and also deter it. You know, we want to, to, to let individuals know who would come into the city to commit crime. That they're doing it in a way that will be noticed, that their information will be captured. And that we're not going to allow Ansonia to just be a safe space for doing things like, like happened last week, right? Especially areas that are highly residential, next to parks. They should know that we're watching. And we wanna do it in a smart way. We wanna do it in a way that, where we're getting the maximum, the maximum return. On our investment. So we're going to be going to some firms and looking for consultancy report to let us know, you know, what our options are. And, and this board is gonna play a part in taking a look at those options and moving forward.
So are we gonna, are we gonna be able to monitor this monthly or are we less than that, whatever?
I'll have an update for you in January.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna make a commitment with, with our, our team, us, our team. That we're gonna try to put some thoughts and ideas on, on this. And we're gonna work together as a team. And hopefully we'll have, every, every month we'll have, you know, some good output. Is that our goal?
Exactly, exactly. It's, the, the goal is results. The goal is to move forward in a way where we're going to have results. We know surveillance statistics show can decrease crime. About, on, on an average of fifty percent. It's, it's having the cameras there to be able to apprehend the, the, the people committing the crimes. And also to deter the crimes. You know, you're, you're gonna be much less likely to try to get away with something like that if you know you're under surveillance. So it's in a way a common sense solution, but one that modern technology gives us more options these days to implement. And we wanna be embracing that technology. You're talking about public spaces, public streets where this is happening. There's no reason that we can avail ourselves of modern technology to keep Ansonia residents safe. And when you take a look at the cost effectiveness of that versus other methods. We think that it, it would be of, you know, foolish to not be giving this a, a hard look. And so again, we wanna do it in a professional way. So we wanna go right to the surveillance experts and get some options for this Board of Aldermen on next steps. And of course, we're gonna be looking at funding options as well, but certainly any of, any expenditure that keeps residents safe. That's gonna be worthwhile.
All right. Thank you. And I don't know where the mayor is, but I give him thanks also. I know he's, he's very concerned about this like I am. Thank you.
Very much, Charlie, very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions for the chief from the Alderman? Chief, on a lighter note, Alderman Rivers was a little too shy to ask this, but he wanted, he knows that there was that pancake on the loose. And you guys were trying to hunt him down. And he wanted to know if you can be arrested for unwaffle activity.
I am not even gonna touch on that.
Thank you, Chief, for not touching it.
I rescind my nomination.
All right, let's flip over to Superintendent Joe DeBaco.
Thank you, everyone. And first, like everybody else, I'd like to congratulate all those elected officials. And you, President Schurt, Aldermen and older women. I also would like to give a big thank you to the mayor and everyone that's on this call for their support while I was out. I was out for about five months and it was because of the support and the caring of the community that we live here in, here in Ansonia. That has helped me and wanted me, I, I couldn't be more proud and happier to come back to the great city of Ansonia. So I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, everyone that's on this, on this Zoom call. Yes, we did have an unfortunate event. I can't stress enough, the class, Wayne Williams, Chief Williams and our SRO. Mike Berry, with collaboration between our Ansonia, you know, administration, it shows what true collaboration can do. It also shows that our safety and security plans are in place and that when they need to be executed, they can be. It is unfortunate, but like Wayne said, we agree totally. Anything that jeopardize the safety and security of our students or our community will not be tolerated. And I, I said that, I'm glad I was able to add my two cents on to the police report that was put out. It's, it's something we take very serious. And I actually hold the safety and security of our students, you know, very dear. And I also agree with Wayne when he said that it, this is a community effort. I actually penned a letter today to parents and families to really take a look at their child's social media presence and their social media. You know, footprint. I think some families and parents would be surprised to see all the niceties that are shared. Between them and their friends. So I, I have a letter, it's ready to go out. But I was told I should send some resources as well when I sent my letter out, resources for parents could help. You know, use it as a jumpstart to talk to their child when it comes to their, their obligation as a digital citizen. And what they should, what they should and should not be presenting online. And I think people don't know of the permanency of what they write. They also think they're in closed rooms and that it doesn't go anywhere. But I, I think we have to do a better job of helping ourselves and helping our community. And actually just being nicer to people, but also it's just unbelievably unfortunate event. But on a more positive note, tonight at need, there is a vaccination clinic. And yes, there will be another one on Thursday and on Saturday, like, like the mayor stated. I think we have some more positive things to come. I'm very excited to put twenty twenty-one in the rearview mirror myself. I look forward to twenty twenty-two. I do wanna wish everyone here a happy holiday and a wonderful new year. Because I do think it's gonna be, bring some bigger and better things. And I wish, just like, I feel like Sheila O'Malley, how she can't tell you everything, but I do feel as if in the middle to the end of January. Hopefully we'll have some big announcements, you know, going on as well in our school system. Can't really say exactly what it is, but I, I, I feel like something good's gonna happen toward the middle end of January. So once again, I, I, I feel like the Sheila O'Malley who can't say everything, but I gotta tell you guys enough. But, um, once again, I can't thank you enough for your support and I'm here to answer any questions. But I do wanna say, I couldn't be happier that we have SROs in our building. We have Mike Berry. I couldn't be happier with the collaboration we have with our police department. And I can't tell you how classy and, and I, I've been part of building evacuations before. And, and unfortunate, but it went as smooth as it, as it could go. It has, there's a systematic way. So it does take a while, but guess what? Every kid gets home, parents get to hug their child one more time. And you know what? That's what our job is to do. But, and I, I can't thank the, the collaboration enough. But once again, I'm here to answer any questions.
Joe.
Yes.
First of all, I wanna thank you for all that you do. And everything ran smoothly under your leadership. While you were away. And it's good to see you at the games again. You, I've seen you at the games. And just keep on doing the good work, Joe. It's good to have you back.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rivers.
Very nice.
Any other questions for Mr. DeBaco tonight, Dr. DeBaco? From the Alderman. All right. Well, welcome back and thank you, thank you. And also Chief Williams, again, for your efforts on that. And we look forward to your exciting news.
All right.
Next month.
Sounds good.
All right. So there ends public official session. We'll move on to committee reports, the Finance Committee.
Hey, Josh, a.
They all bills are found to be correct.
Second.
Motion by Stowe, second by Mamone, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain, abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, motion carries unanimously. Other committee reports from the Alderman, anything this month? From subcommittees, anything that any of the Alderman want to report? All right. It's my kind of my kind of update. I'll move on to municipal reports. We have the boat recommendations from the Board of Apportement and Taxation Meeting of 12/6/2021. Don't all speak at once. Accept that report?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Stowe. Any comments, questions? All right, all in favor? Opposed, abstained?
Josh, can I abstain? I didn't get a chance to review it. So can I just abstain from that? Sorry.
Well, no opposed, one abstention, Mamone. Motion here. Land use report for the month of December was in your packet. Wish to accept?
So moved?
Except by Mamone.
Second.
Second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Just want to note again, as usual, the revenue for the month of 2021 from the Building Department was $47,282.08.
Make a motion.
Oh, I just was, there's nothing to motion here. I was just, I was just noting noting for the record.
Don't jam us up, Chicago.
I was reading. I was reading it today.
Now these guys are working in cahoots together. They're they're trading trading jabs here. All right. Let's see, we're motion to, let's see, land use report. Next up, tax collector report and request for refunds in the amount of $2,456.08 if found to be correct.
Make a motion to accept the refund report in the amount of 2456.05.
Second.
Motion by Mamone, second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Do you need a motion for the tax collector report as well? Because I'll make a motion to accept that as well.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the tax collector report.
Second.
Motion by Mamone, second by Tar to accept the tax collectors report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Our motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tony. Accidents and claims, we had two, 12/21, 1021, Hoysor Franklin Jr. versus City of Ansonia and 12/21, 1022, Benchmark Municipal Tax Services LTD versus City of Ansonia.
Motion to send to corporate council.
Second.
Motion to send to corporation council by Tar, second by Mamone, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right. We will pass those on. We have no communications this month. We have three, we got three resignation letters. They are all included in your packet. The first one was from Daniel Bosks resigning from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Motion to accept his resignation and send him a letter of thanks for his service to the commission.
Second.
Motion by Mamone and second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed? Stained? All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bosk, for your service. Second resignation was Lois Ann Marazzi resigning from the Ansonia Historical Commission.
Motion to accept that resignation as well and send her a letter of thanks for her service on the commission.
Second.
All right, motion again by Mamone and second again by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. And the third resignation is Renee Simpson resigning from the Ansonia Cultural Commission.
Make a motion to accept her resignation as well and send her a letter of thanks for her service to the commission as well.
Well, second that again.
All right. So once again, motion by Mamone, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right. Thank you all. Thanks to all three of them for their service on those committees. Resolutions. Number one is certified resolution number one remediation and demolition of SHW. I have the document here. That is, that's the resolution in the amount of $1 million. The remediation and demolition of SHW.
Wait, what?
Sheila, you want to explain how these work?
These are standard resolutions that we have to we have to get approved by this board. It it simply allows the mayor to enter into a financial assistance agreement and accept the grant awards. We received two grants for SHW, one for $800,000 for remediation and one for $200,000 assessment dollars for a total of $1 million. This just authorizes the the City of Ansonia to accept the $1 million.
Any other questions on that?
The grant funds, there's no match.
Yeah. We're just authorizing them to to be able to to receive.
Fine. One's 2 million and one's a million. Is that correct?
Well, resolution one, resolution one is 1 million.
Okay, that's what I was confused.
A resolution 2, 2 million. That's a different one. Yep.
It's worth noting that they are inappropriately tagged within the agenda that was sent out.
Yeah.
Resolution two is actually attached as resolution one.
Right.
And resolution one in as the inverse is tagged as resolution two. That's why there's a little little confusion here.
Right.
So.
Resolution number one is 2 million, right?
Right.
Right.
All right, so by the file name, by the file name, but what's written in as resolution number one and stamped in is specific for the $1 million just called out.
Right.
And that's for the SH.
Resolution one is remediation demolition of SHW, $1 million, correct?
Yes.
And resolution two is renovation extrusion mill ACB, $2 million.
That's correct.
Yes.
So Sheila, before I make this motion, I just want to thank you for all your efforts on this. I know this has been a giant eyesore for Ansonia and appreciate all of your efforts on chasing every nickel and dime you can to make it go away as quickly as possible for every resident in this city. I can't stand driving by and every little bit that gets knocked down is is it takes some some pride and pleasure and it's a giant blessing. So with that, I will make a motion to accept resolution number one.
Josh, can he's gonna, Josh, can I ask through you, can I ask a question of Sheila?
Can we can we get a second on this first and then we can?
Sorry.
Second.
So a motion by Mamone, second by, okay, go ahead, Alderman.
Sheila, for for those of us that may not have had the background on this, can you describe the scope of the work of each grant?
Yeah, the the assessment grant was for a phase two and some subsurface testing and an asbestos survey. The the remediation money is for demolition and also for removal of tanks and any contaminants contaminated material on the property. For, you know, so 800,000 was for remediation and demolition. 200,000 is for was for additional testing that needed to be done.
And can you describe a timeline going forward on the demolition grant?
Yeah, that's a fair question. We hope to have another section of the property down in January. So we'll be working on a building, I believe it's building 12 in January there. And next time I'll bring a map so you guys can see what buildings will be teardowns and what could potentially be salvaged on that site. But yeah, in January, you'll see some demolition and we'll just keep going until all the buildings that can be demolished are going to be taken down. So hopefully within a six month period, you'll have, you'll have three and a half acres cleared.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so on resolution one, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. So all in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. Passes, we'll move on to number two. That's the $2 million for renovation of the extrusion mill at ACB, Ansonia Copper and Brass. We have a motion to accept that one.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second by Janetti. Any questions on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or abstaining? All right, motion passes. Again, thank you for your work on that and thank you guys for approving that. Unward and upward. All right, we move on to appointments. You have, it says on the agenda, see mayor's letter, you received, I believe it was yesterday, December 13th, was an amended appointment letter.
Yep.
So that's that's what we'll be going off of. So let me pull that out and we'll take these by category. Dear Board of Aldermen pursuant to my powers under the city charter and code, I hereby submit the following appointments. The first one is VEM's two-year terms. Two nominees, first one, Michael Warhala, two evening star drive Seymour, Connecticut, term expiring 12/10/23.
I just have a a question about that. I I thought to them, them terms of October to October, I mean, I don't exactly know how that works.
I think Kurt's on the line, but VEM's is, you can you can appoint, the mayor can appoint at any time during the term. Can appoint members from the from the city. And he wanted Mike Warhol as the chief and John Merini as the mayor's office.
Okay, no, I I was just curious about that. I mean, I have to abstain anyway because I am on the commission, so.
And just this is this is Kurt's follow up on what Sheila said. As a former VEM's board member myself, the the term is October to October. But again, that's for the VEM's board itself. You know, officers, board members come and go based on changes from the host cities. You know, the mayor, mayor's first electmen each have a designate they put on and then each of the services also has a designate that they put on. So that's where the two members come from. So that's that's kind of the reasoning behind it.
Okay.
So should this be in October expiration on the term?
I think if you have an established board, so you know, for let's say for next year, I think doing it October to October would make sense. I don't think you'd want to hinder a new mayor or a new Board of Aldermen to be locked into something that was chosen a month before an election. So, you know, that I think that's a decision that you guys would need to make, but I think you would want to give you know, any new mayor, any new Board of Aldermen, the opportunity to make changes as they see fit.
Thank you for your updates on that. So we we have a nominee, Mike Warhala, Michael Warhala, he's the current arms chief. Do we have a nomination?
So I'm a little unclear here. So are we do, is it within our power to override that October to October kind of timeframe? You know, if we so wish? Or is that something that's just not allowed?
I think what what Kurt was saying was that VEM's, which is a regional entity, operates on an October to October schedule, but the mayor can do whatever can 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 designate his person at any point. It could be December, it could be also another point during the year.
I would add that, you know, the mayor, typically you want the chief of your emergency medical services.
Well, I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing that. I think I think Mike would be a great fit.
Yeah, that's changed, so.
It, no, no, I'm not disputing that at all. I'm disputing the timeframe, you know, if it's supposed to be in October to October. And for whatever reason, two months has lapped and this is only going to be a 22-month appointment versus, you know, do we have the right to extend it the extra two months through December? I don't have a problem making the motion on Mike or Mr. Merini.
I I guess I'm on the flip side of that was that the previous term then was a 26-month term. So I again, I would fall back to, you know, giving the ability of a new board or a new mayor, the option of making a change or putting in their person or or designate. So I mean, no, I mean, Jared, I think they're done a great job as as president of VEM's, but you know, that's again, those are the VEM's dates, which I think are different than than the city states.
Thank you. Has her hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I think these are really only mayoral appointments. I don't think the Board of Aldermen even has to approve them. I don't recall that ever being done before. I think the mayor can just send a letter of appointment to the VEM's board, but.
Beth, Beth is accurate.
Yeah, I don't I don't think they require Alderman.
I think it's really point of information until a lot of Board of Aldermen to be part of the process. But yes, in the past, it's simply been a a letter from the mayor's office. And I believe that's all that VEM's, the agency requires.
Right.
With the next, I just, can we just skip that then and mayor send his letter?
We just accept it as informational?
Please.
Thanks, Ben.
Mayor, thanks for that. Cool. All right, moving on. So the next one, Board of Library Directors, these are three-year terms. There's two, four, six nominees and we'll handle these separately. Dennis Proto, Democrat, 107 Thorn Hollow Road, Cheshire, Connecticut, term expiring 12/31/22.
Josh, in the past, I think it's worth noting on the cultural commission, there was some discussion on residents living in Ansonia. I think it would be good to give a little background on why we have someone out of the city potentially being put on a commission.
John?
Board.
Sure. So in this instance, I do believe that the section that governs the library board, the Board of Directors, to be more accurate, does not, does not actually fall under the mandate to have its directors be city residents. And this is due to the language that's contained in Section 145, which has a general mandate that if it the charter doesn't specify otherwise specifically that appointments to boards and commissions that are done by nomination of the mayor have to be residents of the City of Ansonia. Okay, and that's by stringing together Section 145 and also I believe Section 9 that that deals with mayoral nominations. And not to be too technical, but the library director, the the section that deals with library directors has language that indicates that the mayor appoints rather than nominates. That being said, in the past, we have waived the requirement to put residents on city boards where it was in the best interest of the City of Ansonia. For example, the Economic Development Commission, a prior Board of Aldermen found that it served the city's interest to have several members be business owners who are playing a vital role in economic development, had something to offer the board, but who were actually residents of other valley towns. For example, Secums was one specific example. Mr. Greg Secum was allowed to serve on the EDC despite the fact that he was a Seymour resident. And that past practice has also been applied to the cultural commission. We know Mr. Rich DeCarlo has done a lot for events and event planning in the City of Ansonia. He is on the cultural commission and the cultural commission otherwise crawl under that mandate of having only city residents sit on the board, but the But the provisions of section 145 were waived. So I'd recommend, just to be consistent with what we've done and to be on the, at the more conservative side. That this board of aldermen explicitly on the record, make a motion to waive the requirements of the charter. With respect to board and commission members being residents of the city of Ansonia. Although I will add that there is some language that, that does make this a little bit of a special exception. I think it's in the gray area. As to whether it's required in the first place, but I'd recommend waiving the requirements of section 145. Just to be on the conservative side and, and just to stay with the practice that we've used in the past. And in this case, the mayor's office is proposing two individuals. Were employees of the board of education to be on this board. And the thought is that this serves the city and the library by helping to foster a connection between the public library. And not only the board of ed, but the board of ads libraries. And this connection is important because the library, of course, one of its core functions is to serve the youth of Ansonia. And of course, students in Ansonia of Ansonia Public Schools are likely to, to get a major benefit. From expanded use of the library services and that of course goes through all ages. From young children to our high school students. We really want to foster, build that, that relationship. We believe having two board of ed employees on the board could really only help that effort.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. And with that, I would like to make a kind of a compound nomination here or a compound motion to. Stealing your verbiage, waive section 145 for the residency status and accept the nomination of Dennis Proto to the. Board of Library Directors.
We have a motion to waive and to appoint Dennis Proto Democrat to. Yes. Second by Cassetti. Any further discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? I'm going to abstain. As you guys know, I'm a conflict of interest for myself. My wife actually worked for the library, so I'm gonna abstain from all these.
Is Beth's hand still up from before, or is that a new hand?
Yeah, no, it's up from before.
All right, so second nominee or. Second person is Jen Bosk's Republican of 99 Jewett Street in Ansonia. Term expiring 12, 31, 24.
I make that.
By Rivers, second by Mamon. All in favor? Any opposed? And all abstained. Motion passes. All right, third person, Lisa Buendia, Republican of 48 Ben Street in Sonya.
Josh, I'll make that motion in, in light of the conversations that we've had with her and her interest in the library program. So I'll, I'm, I'm kind of honored to make that. Motion for her.
Second.
All right, motion by Mamon, second by Tar, and although I enjoyed talking with her, I also abstain on that. Next one, Shelley Sheridan, independent, 49 Elm Street, Ansonia, Connecticut, term expiring 12, 30, 24.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Cassetti. Second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? And one abstention myself. And the last one is John LaRover, 21 Deer Run Drive. Seymour, Connecticut, term ending, I can't even read it. 12, 31, 24.
Answer a question. This is also the second employee for the board of education, Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Okay, I'm like a compound motion on this one to waive section 145, as we have said before, and make a motion to accept John LaRove. LaRovera. Yeah, hi, his, this gentleman to the Board of Library Directors.
Motion by Mamon and I think second by.
No, that was a, I don't think.
Second by not. All in favor? Any opposed? And one abstention, me. All right, thank you. All right, moving on, we have two Board of Police Commissioners. These are two year terms. First nominee, these are both from Ansonia, so moving on. Robert Goldson, 29 Glen Drive, Ansonia, Connecticut, term expiring 12, 31, 23.
I make that motion.
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Second by Mamon. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, second one, Anthony Lovinsky, Three Hoinski Way. Term expiring 12, 31, 23.
Make a motion to accept the nomination of Mr. Lovinsky to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Next one is the Board of Public Works, two year terms. There are two nominees, both reappointments. Daniel King, 70 Woodlawn Ave, apartment 16, term expiring 12, 31, 23.
I make that motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon. Any discussion about nixing Dan on this one? Kidding. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And one abstention, King. Congrats. Second is, and thank you, Paul. Oh God, I'm never gonna get this right. Paul Juswischen, 52 Basset Street, term expiring 12, 31, 23.
Make the motion.
Motion by Tar. Second by Cassetti. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and congrats. Next category, commission for elderly services. These are three year terms. First, Diane Stroman, 66 High Street. Term expiring 12, 31, 24.
I will make that motion for Diane. I'm honored to do that too.
I'd be honored to second that.
All right, honorable motion by Rivers with an honorable second by Mamon. All honorably in, in, in favor? Abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Second one is Priscilla Balaban of 140 Pulaski Highway, term expiring 12, 31, 24.
Make that motion to accept.
Motion by Mamon, second by Cassetti. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And last one, Joan Lawler, 45 Northwest Wood Road, term expiring 12, 31, 24. Motion by Cassetti, second by. Second by Tar. All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Congrats to all three. Moving on, Corporation Counsel. John, John P. Merini, 9 Dempsey Court, term expiring 12, 31, 23.
Like Chicago, I'd be honored to make that motion to accept Mr. Merini as Corporation Counsel for another year.
All, uh, motion by own, second by Cassetti. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, congratulations. Uh, we're gonna skip, the fire commissioners are listed on here. Those are actually, that's my duty to do that. Those will appear on the committee list. That will be coming out this month or very beginning of January, although the candidates will be the same. Those are my choices as well. So move on to historical commission, two year terms. There are three, three members listed. First, Thomas Clifford, the third, one, or sorry, 10 South Wood Road, term expiring 11, 30, 23.
Would like to make that motion for approval.
Motion by Alderman Adamowski, second by Cassetti. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries. Michelle Libby, 256 North State Street, term expiring 12, 31, 23. Second by Adamowski. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, unanimous. And the last one, Bartholomew Flaherty, 28 Pine Crest Ave, term expiring 11, 30, 23.
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yep, go ahead.
The expiration date on this term, is this different? Is this a replacement for, well, no, this is a reappointment. This wasn't replacing someone who resigned, so. Why is the term different?
Well, the first and the third are, are both 11, 30, 23, and the second one was 12, 31.
Oh, all right, fair point.
So they just when, when the terms ended up ending the last time, so perhaps two people who left early. Or that was when they were done prior.
Yep, okay.
Any other comments on this? All right, so we have a motion for the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Congrats to all three. Next up, we have Inland Wetlands Commission, two year terms. There are two people. First, Edward Jones, 21 Cathy Lane, term expiring 12, 31, 23.
Motion to accept.
Second by Janetti. Yep, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. And Jeffrey Gould, 10 Hole Street, motion, or sorry, term expiring 12, 31, 23.
I make a motion.
By Janetti, second by Mamon. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, congrats to both of them. Planning and zoning commission, we have one, a, a five year term. Jared Heon, current chairman, 10 Keely Lane, term expiring 12, 31, 26. Motion by Tar, second by Cassetti.
Just a note. I just want to say he does a fine job and sometimes those meetings do get a little, a li- a little out of hand. He does a. A great job at, you know, keeping things, you know, contained, so cheers to him.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that. It's been a tough year and he's done a really good job. Congrats and thanks to him. A lot of heavy lifting this year. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, congrats. Thank you. I don't even know what I'll be doing in five years, but. Locked in on the planning and zoning level here. Next up, retirement board, we have two, four, six members. All two year terms. And actually, let's see, all of them are expiring 12, 31, 23, so I'll skip the dates on these. First up, Dan King.
Josh, is it, is it possible to take these together?
Read all the names off, yeah.
Well, is there any, other than against Janetti, is there any one that you want to vote again? All right, is there, is there anyone that's gonna vote against any of these or abstain or are we gonna be go unanimous on all of them? Okay.
I got abstained because my name is on there.
With one abstention on King and one abstention on Janetti, the rest will be. What's that?
So, I mean. Yeah, these are nominations, but so many on these boards has to be on it.
You have to be sworn in to it, correct?
Yeah.
I believe so, and I'm, I'm gonna, when I read the name, I'll read the affiliation that's with it as well. Uh, so, Dan, Daniel King, Republican, Board of Aldermen, 70 Woodlawn Ave, apartment 16. Elizabeth Lynch, Democrat, 63 Franklin Street. Judith Larkin. Nicolari, Republican, 167 Pulaski Highway, Gary Cassetti, Democrat. Public Works, 102 Route Ave. David Papson, Republican, boat, 16 Chester Street and Joseph Janetti, Democrat Board of Aldermen to Gracie Lane. So, we will log in a abstention for Dan on Dan King and Joe on. Joe Janetti. All in favor of all the rest of them as a group?
Can you add in the, the term expires 12, 31, 23? You'd left that piece out, sorry.
All, all expiring 12, 31, 23. So we, we have a nominator for all these?
I will make that motion to it.
Yeah, nominee for nomination by Mamon, second by Tar. All in favor? Uh, abstentions? We have those logged. Any opposed? All right, perfect. Done.
Congratulations, guys.
Congrats. All right, nap time, and then we'll come back for the rest. Let's see here. He's gotta get caught up here on the papers. All right.
New business.
Nothing under ordinance? I started throwing papers around because I get so excited and I. Threw away stuff that I actually needed. I'm just trying to find it again.
Didn't flip out.
Yeah. Where are we at? Appointments? Nothing in order is new business. Okay, so we have two items. Consideration, number one, consideration and acceptance of RE building. Digitization of records, Sheila O'Malley. Can you speak to this?
Yes, I can. So we went out for three quotes. Contacted one of the vendors. They said they would submit. They were supposed to meet with building. They never did. That was CME Imaging Solutions, so we don't have a quote from them. We had a quote from Kennedy Employment Services for $19,000. And we had a quote from Tangible Analytics Consulting for $16,000. So I'm recommending or requesting approval for the low bid, which is $16,000. That's to digitalize the scanning of all the building files, so they will be. You know, easily available and move it right into the 21st century.
I make that motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar. Any other questions on this or?
Quick point of discussion on the finances. Is Kurt still on?
Yeah.
I'm here. Did I miss Christmas?
No, no, not at all. Is, is this budgeted? What's the, and where is this being paid from?
It's out of the capital, so we want to list the capital project.
Got it. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. You know, also up on number two, a consideration in potential approval of senior center contract award to Diversity Construction Group LLC. This was in your packet, about 15 pages. Do you want to add anything before we move on or?
We, we did get three bids for this, for our senior center project. The low bid was Olympus at 906,000. We asked them to level their pricing. They ended up reneging on that, which would have cost us probably in the, in the range of 970,000. The next lowest bidder is diversity. That's the contract you have before, before you for 924,000. And then we did have one from BRD in Hartford for 980,000. I am requesting approval. Of the contract with diversity for 924,000 for the senior center.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rivers, second. Second by Tar. Your discussion?
Sorry, guys, I'm, I'm just that, that guy tonight. Sheila, do we have any? Any provision for an owner's rep in here at, at all?
Uh, there is a provision for an owner's rep. There is a provision for an owner's rep, you have one point two million, within that amount is the contractor's number, the owner's rep, the architect, and furniture.
Are we using the, the same firm we used before?
We are.
Awesome, okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, all right, motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions, all right, motion passes, congrats, and thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on up, and a few of us are newly minted seniors by the, the new rules, so we're very excited. Would be me.
Diane, you better haze them well.
Yeah. No regret lowering it to fifty.
Will do, will do.
Thank you. All right, now moving on, under old business, we have two items, the first one is the issue of Kimberly Lane, Kimberly Lane, number two, consideration, the Planning and Zoning Commission's eight twenty-four referral, so we did receive a letter from Planning and Zoning. After they met, you recall, this has gone, this has gone on for a couple months, several months, actually. And in November, end of November, Planning and Zoning, the commission members made a motion for a favorable referral for Kimberly Lane to be accepted as a city road, so as to clarify the legal obligations for maintenance of the roadway and to ensure a safe and functional path of travel for its residents and emergency vehicles, motion. It was unanimously voted through by Planning and Zoning, there was a note by the chairman, Chairman Heon, who said, my only caution on it would be the naming as an emergency responder, a street that is split in two, that does not connect is very confusing, I would hope the Board of Aldermen can maybe call it extension or something like that in order to split the difference and make sure that folks aren't going up to the hilltop when there's an emergency down off of Myrtle Ave. If you recall, this is the, this is the properties up the hill. You go up Myrtle Ave, and then you hit a sign for Kimberly Lane, you go up the hill, steep hill, and then a few houses, and then there's woods, and it doesn't connect to the other side by drive to Kimberly Lane, which is up by Ben's in the Seventh Ward, so that's why that comment is made there, so what's your pleasure on this?
Can I add to that, please?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would like to echo Jared's, what'd be said about that, I drove the fire truck up there a few times, and it is a very valid point that we do make it extension, like he said, so, just to let you know, it is confusing, and, and an emergency could make a difference.
Well, I would, I would actually say that I think it should be renamed, but I think, I think extension is even more confusing because it doesn't, it's not an extension of the other one, so I would think a totally new name would be preferable, because they don't connect.
We call it Stella Drive for all the work she's put into it. Sorry, Stella.
What, what happens though with the post office?
Yeah, you have to get approval from them.
Let's just deal with the referral right now, all right?
We, we can, we can, we should take that under advisement, or maybe make that as a, so what's your pleasure, what do you guys wanna do with this?
I motion to accept the referral from the zoning commission.
Motion by Cassetti, who was the second on that?
Me.
Janetti.
Janetti, any further discussion on this? All right, so do we wanna put a caveat in there, accepting it, and we'll further discuss the naming and that confusion, I, I know that for the fire department and any of the emergency responders, they have a hard. Maybe Myrtle Ave.
Continuation of Myrtle Ave, and I just remember the houses.
That sounds like a good idea.
We'll just call it Myrtle Ave.
That seems like a, a good idea, given that I was up there this summer, and the property up in there was sold as, I think, one oh five Myrtle Ave.
Right, it's still listed, it's not the empty lot before it, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that could be an easy solution there.
With the post office and see how that's gonna affect. The numbering of the electrical, the water.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no water, gas, or anything like that, but I think like someone else had mentioned, you know, maybe Myrtle just makes the most sense because the other property is one fifty Myrtle. Maybe that does make the most sense to just have it be continuation of Myrtle.
You're a resident, correct? That should settle it.
All right, so, as, as Alderman Cassetti said, let's focus on the thing at hand, we have this referral, where, where the motion was to accept the, this is a city road. We have a second, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, congratulations, that is, that is complete, we will not see Stella ever again.
Thank you for your work on this, Stella.
Thank you, I appreciate, you know, it took a while to get connected with the right people, so I appreciate that, we finally got it on the agenda, and and yeah, thanks for, thanks for, yeah, thanks for the help and dealing with me and all my crazy emails.
Don't, don't talk down about yourself, you did good.
You know, I appreciate it, but you know, your constituents can get a little crazy if you might not be aware, you know.
No, we're good.
Thank you, all right, moving on, second item under old business is eight twenty-four referral regarding twenty-two Silver Hill Road, this is the one that was added on at the end, or the beginning of the meeting.
I make a motion that we discuss this in executive session.
No, let's just table it.
Oh, then let's table it.
For what?
We've already ruled on this, we've already made a decision on this twice, I think if we're gonna reverse a decision or consider reversing it, we need to have another conversation on it, that was my only thought.
So there's a motion to table by who? Tar or Cassetti, Cassetti, is there a second on that?
Wait, hold on, hold on, didn't Bobby make the motion to discuss it in executive first?
All right, so motion, so we have.
Yes. Jess, I, I don't think, again, John can clarify this, I don't think this qualifies under the Opens, Open Meetings Act for executive session discussion, but John, can you confirm that?
This is not, this is not a conversation that would qualify for, for, for any exemption from public meeting laws under FOI. So, you know, no, we would not be able to have a conversation about this topic under executive session for the purpose of, as I understand it, you know, just discussing the merits of it. There's nothing that would indicate that that would be a privileged conversation.
Well, nobody said it anyways.
We've, we've already decided against this. We've already voted against this.
We're not discussing this.
That's what I'm saying, why are we discussing this?
Because we received in the, we received in our packet a letter from one of the residents asking us to, to consider this, that included a petition, I do, will note that we did receive a negative eight twenty-four referral from Planning and Zoning in August, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, eight twenty-four Silver Hill easement, after an hour of discussion for an easement was made, or an unfavorable referral to the Board of Aldermen, or the eight twenty-four, all were in favor, so. What do you wanna do?
Can I ask a question, so, I'm not sure, I think it was Mr. Dunn that had, in public session, had mentioned something around, you know, public safety improvement, and I know this is just for, I believe, you know, one residence, like parking spot or something like that. You know, it sounds like there's some bigger issue on, you know, it sounds like dead man's curve over there, so, is there an appetite to, you know, do some sort of study or something on how to improve the overall safety of that street? Not just for, you know, a single parking spot, let's just say.
The street has a lot of ledge on it, that street, and it's, and it's, it's bad. If you're gonna give somebody something with that street, just give them as little as possible. You don't wanna be, we don't wanna be responsible for any bigger area than we're already discussing.
But we get that, we have a million streets in the city that have the same issues where there's not enough room for two cars to come through, we've already made a decision on this one, I don't know why it's back before us.
They haven't made the decision to me.
We did, we voted on this two months ago, I believe.
Right.
I thought it got tabled. No?
I think you wanted it to go back to P and Z, and then.
We kicked it back to P and Z for the eight twenty-four, and the eight twenty-four was negative, we can, we can do whatever, we can rule however we want, we can, we can go against the, the P and Z, or we can.
Bobby, do you, do you have an additional motion here now?
I mean, I, I think we take no action at this point, I don't, I'm not.
Yeah, but this is gonna keep coming back.
Kick around, I understand that, so that's why I wanted to have another discussion, we were presented with some information that we found to be unclear, or or different than what came back the second time when it came before us, and I remember as a group, we decided no.
And then since then, we've gotten the unfavorable eight twenty-four.
Twenty-four, which is also unfavorable, so.
So let's vote on it then.
What's the motion?
I withdraw my motion, and I reaffirm a motion to vote on it.
So, is there a motion on this, by, by one of the Aldermen?
Yes, I, I, I would motion that we approve the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the request.
Motion by Adamowski, second by Cassetti, any other discussion on this, this is, is a big, you know, this has been going a long time, so I wanna make sure anyone that wants to speak on this, any other feedback? All right, all in favor? Any opposed, Stowe, any abstentions? All right, so we will accept the, the ruling of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is the, let's see, that's the end of regular, all we have left are three items under executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Tar, all in favor? All right.
Motion to come out of executive session.
I don't think everyone's back yet, hang on.
Dan is not back, and.
Frank.
Frank is not back.
Charlie just got back.
Just wait a minute, make sure we get it, we have everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be a little bit more challenging.
Nope, Charlie's back on video, we got Charlie.
Steve.
Dan is back, okay, we got everybody. Not is not back?
Most, no, not's not back.
Missing not.
All right, let's, let's give him a minute here.
Want me to call him?
John, can you go get him, or close the breakout room?
I think he hit leave room by accident.
Yeah.
Room, yeah, he should be, unless he. Sheila, can you get him on the line? Yeah, if you hit leave room and then hit leave room again, or leave, you're gonna be out of the thing.
Oh, he's here, he's here. They just got here.
All right, so everyone's back, all right, Cassetti, hit it.
Motion to come out of executive session, please.
Second by Janetti, all in favor? All right, we have three items in executive session, on the item of twenty-five Pershing Drive, Blight Lane, what's your pleasure?
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Mammon, second by Rivers, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, all right, second item was potential lease of Opera House.
Motion to accept the lease as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion to accept lease as discussed in executive session by Alderman Mammon, second by Adamowski, all in favor? Opposed. Opposed Cassetti, who else? Cassetti and Tar, any abstentions? One abstention, not. Motion passes, and the final item, executive level contract negotiations.
Didn't we?
Bobby?
Nope.
Didn't we have two different things?
The third one is the final one that we talked about, Bobby.
Motion to empower Kurt to negotiate the position of the CEO of the mayor's office and finalize the contract of the mayor's office.
Motion by Tar, second by Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously, last item.
Hold on, I got something to say.
Oh, okay.
I, I got, I got, I just wanna wish my other Alderman, Joe Cassetti, a happy birthday today.
Oh, what took so long, happy birthday, Mr. Cassetti.
Thank you.
No, I owe you pancakes.
Okay.
At the IHOP.
Yeah, that we supposed to be getting.
That Sheila's getting us our own blue.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn by. Janetti, second?
Anyone.
I will.
All right, hey, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Good night.
Good night, Cowboy Chicago.